Time to start the July 28th City Council Business Meeting. Let's all stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Clerk, please call roll.
Jerry DiTullio.
Here.
Bud Starker.
Present.
Zachary Urban.
Present.
Kristy Davis.
Yes.
George Pond.
Present.
Tracy Langworthy.
Yes.
Genevieve Wooden.
Yes.
And Mr. Fitzgerald has informed me that he will be absent tonight.
Thank you. The minutes, are there any changes in the minutes? Mr. DiTullio.
Madam Mayor, I move to approve the minutes of July 14th, 2014.
Second.
I'll second.
Please pull the council.
Motion carries seven zero.
We do have a award tonight for our police department actually, presented by Chief John, excuse me, Chief John Jackson from Greenwood Village. John is the president of the Colorado Chiefs Association. Do you want to go ahead and step to the podium, please?
My name is John Jackson, and as you stated, I'm the chief of police in Greenwood Village. I am currently the president of the Colorado Association of Chiefs of Police, and I'm here tonight in that position to honor and recognize your police department. The ability to do these things tops the list of the honorable things I'm asked to do on a regular basis for the chiefs of police. My purpose tonight, as stated, is to present Chief Dan Brennan and all the members of the Wheat Ridge Police Department with a plaque for the 2013 Colorado Law Enforcement Challenge. This is an award given annually for the Chiefs Association, and it's incredibly difficult to earn. It's a challenge in that it's very highly competitive when we reach out to the rest of the state and ask for these submissions. There's a couple of reasons why you won this award. You finished second place, but in the metro area for the medium-sized category, there were two specific highlighted programs that you submitted that I think were incredibly unique, creative, and in partnership with the larger goals of the International Association of Chiefs of Police. We're all looking for ways to further create safe environments for our motoring public and our community. There is no better way to do this than some of the creative ways that you have taken on. Two of these projects highlighted are the Negotiate 58 progress that you've made with regard to a highway intersection in your community, specifically focuses on DUI, speed enforcement, and accident reduction. The second is an aware and alive program that focuses on distracted driving. These two programs are the essence of community policing. It speaks to the involvement of your police department with your community, the partnerships that you've created, and what it boils down to is the relationships that you have created and engendered to develop the trust within your community, which is what we all work for. I believe that what you've done here is a model others should follow, and the International Association of Chiefs of Police are echoing that same sentiment. I want to stress the fact that a second-place finish is a win for your community because it keeps them safer, and with that, I would like to present this award to Chief Dan Brennan. These accomplishments do not just happen. It takes leadership, and you're lucky to have such progressive and visionary leadership that Chief Brennan provides your police department. On behalf of the Colorado Association of Chiefs of Police, it's my pleasure to present the Wheat Ridge Police Department and Chief Dan Brennan with this achievement in the 2013 Colorado Law Enforcement Challenge, municipal category, medium-sized city. You're to be congratulated. Thank you for allowing me to participate in this honor, and your police department should be very proud to work for such a high caliber police agency, and I'm honored to be here this evening. Thank you very, very much.
Thank you, Chief Jackson, and we are very pleased to have Chief Brennan.
If I could just take a moment, Mayor and council, I wanted to specifically recognize a few members of our police organization. But first, I'd like to thank Chief Jackson for making the drive from Greenwood Village, and John, the check's in the mail, so thanks for your kind words. I'd like to recognize our crime and traffic team first. Council will remember that in the 2004 sales tax election, identifying funds to fund the traffic team were one of the priorities of that one cent sales tax increase. And shortly after, we got folks hired so that we could constitute a traffic team, we recognized that we really needed to have a hybrid team, a team that could do both traffic enforcement and work on some of the traffic issues that we had in our community, but also a team of officers who would have the ability to respond to special kinds of projects and crime issues that we were having in the city. So if I could take a moment just to recognize Sergeant John Pickett, Officer Nate Lovin, Officer Larry Taggart, and Officer Stephen Brooks wasn't able to be here tonight, I'd like to recognize them for their work in traffic and also their work in putting together this application and doing the work that was necessary for that. Their manager, Commander Wade Hammond, and Commander Mark Cooney, who are instrumental in getting this work done. And then I'd also like to recognize Officer Todd Payne. Todd, if you'd raise your hand. Todd received the Mothers Against Drunk Driving Top Officer Award this past year for the number of DUI arrests that he's made. So without the commitment of these men and women in the organization, because all of our patrol division plays a role in traffic enforcement and responding to service requests and the traffic education and enforcement needs throughout the community, without everybody's willingness to pitch in and make Wheat Ridge a safer community, we wouldn't have been able to achieve this award. And I think it again just highlights the progressive nature, not only of the police department, but the city in making Wheat Ridge a great community to live, work, and play. Thank you.
Thanks again. Let's give another applause. Are there any changes to tonight's agenda? Hearing none, let's move on to item, oh no, let's move on to citizens' right to speak. Are there any citizens here that wish to speak on?
She'd like to introduce a principal.
Okay. You would like to introduce a principal who's going to speak, I take it.
Hello, is it on? I'd like to introduce a principal that has come tonight to speak with us. Earlier this year, we formed a committee in Wheat Ridge called the Committee for Educational Excellence. It's a coalition of people come together to help our local schools. So the committee is working with 18 of our local schools, and the principals, and city personnel, the police department, and some district personnel, and we've come together to look at different ways that we can help our local schools excel. And this would include working with the principals, what the city can do, what programs we can start, and how we can get information from the schools to the citizens and from the citizens back to the city and the schools. As part of that, we're going to have principals come and talk during the next school year. Our first principal is here, and I'd like to introduce John Martinez from Wilmore Davis Elementary.
Hello, John.
Good evening. I'm the first speaker, so it's going to be a little rough around the edges, I'm sure. So first, I'd like to take the moment to thank Mayor Joyce J. and Councilwoman Genevieve Wooden for giving me this opportunity tonight, excuse me, to speak a little bit about our school. So I think you need to know a little bit about Wilmore Davis. Wilmore Davis is a Jefferson County Public School, which is located in what we call Wheat Ridge Articulation Area at 7975 West 41st Avenue. Our school was built in 1954. It's an older school, and is named for the W.W. Wilmore and R.T. Davis families, which own and operate a greenhouse floral businesses on the corner of 38th Avenue and Wadsworth Boulevard. A little bit about our school, Wilmore Davis is rated through this district and CDE, Colorado Department of Education, as a performing school. We're committed to enriching an educational environment for our students through the five following components: addressing individual student needs, to serve our diverse student population, to provide research-based instruction, to integrate up-to-date technology in every classroom, to promote safety throughout our school through the use of the PBIS discipline system, and encourage parent and community participation. Our school currently serves 340 diverse students, kindergarten through sixth grade. It's through our partnerships with PTA and community members that we're able to offer extracurricular activities to support our student development. Our school continues to engage partnerships with families and community members, such as the Wheat Ridge Kiwanis Club, to provide those extra ports for our school. Right now, I think the biggest thing that our school is doing is trying to continue to work with our neighborhood. We are a neighborhood school tucked away in a small piece of the community. We like to call ourselves a small school with a large heart, because that's what we are, green light. Am I done? Anyway, the thing we work on most is working with the community and the parking situation that has been an issue with our school and the community for the last 10 plus years, actually. We think we addressed this pretty well last year with the help of the Wheat Ridge Police Department, actually, in coning off parts of the street to prohibit some parking, to extend our drive-through lane. And our future plan is to work with the city and, I guess, the district, whenever they get a little bit more money, and that is to create a longer drive-through lane. That's going to request more construction and dollars. I really don't know what I was supposed to speak about, other than we are a really good We are, kind of like I said, tucked away, and so we're kind of like forgotten a little bit, and that's really okay with us. We're friendly staff, friendly school, friendly students. Is that what I was supposed to share?
Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you, John. I think the concept was that each school will come and speak to council, just so we get more familiar with the schools and the cooperation between the city and the schools. So thank you very much for coming. We'll be having more principals, isn't that correct?
Yeah.
Okay, let's move on to citizens' right to speak. These are for matters other than are on the agenda, and I have three people signed up. Did one of you want to come forward?
Oh, I don't really want to call the police more.
Or the principal.
Or the principal.
Oh, it's the principal.
And that's one of the principals I don't know in the Jefferson County School District. But my name is John Clark, CLARK, address is 4665 Swadley. I just want to take a quick minute to urge everybody to go to the Carnation Festival that's coming up in a couple of weeks. I've heard, you got a green light, I got a red light, what does that mean?
Oh.
Heard in the past couple of weeks, there's a lot of new stuff, a lot of great things coming up, including a car show, an Italian car show that my son is ecstatic about. Proud to be involved in the parade. Last year, Everett Middle School won the, we were involved with Stover Elementary. It won, I think, best school or best elementary school, I'm sorry, John. Everett won the Grand Marshall Award, and I think they're going to be gunning for that again. So I just want to urge everybody to go to that in a couple of weeks. Before that, this next coming weekend, we all live in Jefferson County, Jefferson County Fair is August 7th through the 10th, and I'd like to urge everybody to make it out to the Jefferson County Fair, support the kids that are from Wheat Ridge in 4H, go to Wheat Ridge High School, and they're showing their animals. It's a very small fair compared to, I went to the Weld County Fair, compared to some of the others along the front range, it's very small, but it's a very good fair. I just urge everybody to come. I know Ms. Davis last week was saying something about auctions, loving auctions, and they're going to have a silent auction. They'll have a pie-eating contest, and they'll have, there's just, there's a whole slew of things. If anybody wants any information, I do have some flyers on it, but again, August 7th through the 10th at Jefferson County Fairgrounds. So, thank you.
Thank you, John. And if you'd pass those down, that would be good.
I got about three or four, if anybody needs one, they can come see me, I'll give them one.
All right, if you'll give it to the clerk, then she can make copies if we want.
And if there's any local businesses that want a big size poster, I can get ahold of those and put it.
I thought you were going to say stack that high, but no.
Thank you.
You bet.
Vivian Voss, spelled V as in Victor, O as in Sam, 6920, West 47th Place. And I would like to speak just to two things off the agenda. First of all, the ballot. I realize there's got to be some legal verbiage in there, but it sure would be nice if it were, you know, less is more, and it would be nice if yes didn't mean no and no didn't mean yes. I'd like to see the ballot kept short and simple, and I understand there's more than one issue on there, and I would like to see them not bundled and separated in their voting capacity. Also, I would like to speak to the fact that, yes, we've got a vote going for the with-designation of 38th Avenue, and whether it's a constriction width dimension now or during the two years that it might take to change that, I believe even now and possibly then, we will be sending more traffic that's coming east to westbound, not on 38th Avenue, but more on 44th Avenue, and from Sheridan to Harlan on 44th Avenue, there's a big old Walmart. There's a new liquor store, I understand, that's going in there, and they're also building a large tire store. So that's not Wheat Ridge dollars, that's not Wheat Ridge sales tax revenue, and if they're shopping on 44th, where there's a lot to shop at, then they probably won't be traveling down to Apple Jacks or to any of the automotive tire stores that we have on 38th. So I think that's already a problem, and I'd hate to see it be more spending out of the city. One thing in regards to 38th, I've been hearing is that the slowdown of the traffic and that maybe the constriction of the width is trying to handle that capacity, but what if the stoplights between, not at Sheridan and Wadsworth, but between there, get taken out and put in four-way stops? I saw just the other day that 32nd and Lowell over in the Highlands is doing that, and possibly that would be a way to slow down. I haven't heard anything from the city in regards to what they want to see on 38th Avenue, what type of businesses do you want? And I would like that to be spoken to sometime if we could. And then in regards to what's being spent on 38th Avenue, with Wheat Ridge Recyclery paying off their loan, and we have 19 more years of sales tax revenue coming in, possibly we could hear the thoughts on how that money would be spent. Thank you.
Thank you.
Kathy Tolman at 4735 Reed Street. This is just a question, I was just thinking about, if we go to the narrowing of 38th, will that negatively impact the new shopping areas on 38th and Wadsworth and also on Kipling? Will that have an effect or does that not have an effect? And I'm just throwing that out there so that sometime, maybe we can look at that seriously to see if that, if any effect that has. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other citizens who have not actually signed up that wish to speak? Okay, let's move on to the meeting. Ordinance on first reading, item number one, Mr. Starker.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'm pleased to introduce item number one. This is Council Bill Number 07, 2014, and ordinance concerning economic development and in connection therewith, amending the Enhanced Sales Tax Incentive Program and the Business Development Zone Program within the city. This ordinance amends the Code of Laws concerning the Enhanced Sales Tax Incentive Program, STIP, and the Business Development Zone, BDZ, program in order to improve the operation of the programs and to eliminate internal inconsistencies between them. Is motion in order?
Yes.
I move to approve Council Bill Number 07, 2014, and ordinance concerning economic development and in connection therewith, amending the Enhanced Sales Tax Incentive Program and the Building Development Zone Program within the city on first reading. Order is published, public hearing set for Monday, August 11th, 2014, at 7:00 p.m. in City Council chambers, and that it take effect 15 days after final publication.
May I have a second? Second. Second by Ms. Davis. This is ordinance on first reading, there usually not much discussion, it's, you can do it. Can we go ahead and take the vote?
Motion carries seven zero.
Thank you. Item number two, Tracy Langworthy.
Thank you, Mayor. A motion to accept the 2013 Comprehensive Annual Financial Report, CAFR, from Swan Horse &amp; Company LLC. Just real quick, Patrick, will she be presenting? Okay, I'm not going to read all the quotes in, because that would be, okay. Section 10.15 of the Municipal Charter for the City of Wheat Ridge requires that an independent audit be performed annually of all city accounts. The CPA firm of Swan Horse &amp; Company LLC performed the audit of the city's financial statements for the year in December 31, 2013. A representative from Swan Horse &amp; Company will be at the July 28th, 2014 meeting and will present it. The 2013 audit included the regular audit and a single audit. A single audit is required when the city receives grant funding totaling $500,000 or more.
Are we ready to present?
Good evening. Wendy Swanhorse with Swan Horse &amp; Company. We're here to present your 2013 audit, and you got a couple documents. You got the bound financial statements, and also this letter, which is our communication to you guys. So just to kind of summarize what we did, these financial statements are your numbers. You guys, as the governing board, hire us to tell you, we think these numbers are fairly stated in all material respects, and so within the document, you'll find our audit opinion that tells you we think that they are. It's a clean or unmodified audit opinion. You also mentioned the single audit, and you guys got just over $3 million in highway grants last year, so we were required to do some additional audit procedures to make sure you complied with all the federal laws and things. There was actually one thing on the Davis Bacon Act where you guys are required to monitor the wages paid to some of those contractors, and that wasn't done quite right, so that was the one finding we had in that single audit. As far as this management letter goes, you know, you'll see that there are a few comments on the last page of this management letter, but our responsibility to you is to tell you if we think there are significant weaknesses in your internal controls, and I don't believe any of these things rise to that level. There are some things here that can maybe be corrected in the future, but your accounting records in general, as they always are, in very good condition, and we don't make significant adjustments to your books, and nor have we identified any of those significant kind of weaknesses. So all in all, you know, I think the audit went very well.
Good.
So.
Are there any questions of our representative? Looks like not so. Oh, wait, no? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I believe a motion is in order.
I move to accept the 2013 Comprehensive Annual Financial Report from Swan Horse &amp; Company LLC.
Second. Seconded by Ms. Wooden. Any questions or discussion? Yes, we do, Mr. Urban?
No, just as a typo, the cover page says 2014. Sorry, the title page says 2014 Comprehensive Annual Financial Report. It would be the 2013, is that right?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Urban. We did catch at the final version that has been sent to the printer and to be bound has been changed, so thank you.
And Ms. Langworthy?
I just want to make a couple of comments, because she talked about the reasonableness of an audit and how we are, she talked about a couple of little issues, but in our notes, it does go over those and the roles we're taking to fix them for future audits. So while we've identified, and we also have a plan in place to ensure that, you know, we can try to minimize those impacts on our audit reports each year, and this is a sixth, seventh, sixth audit, I think, that I have, you know, got to look through at the CAFR report. It's always very interesting to me, so I appreciate the hard work that you guys do in our audit and that our staff has to do to get everything ready for the audit.
Thank you. Mr. Urban?
Just more substantively, that I see that we've taken and put into place some internal controls related to the Davis Bacon issue, and that's, you think that that's been, have we dealt with any type of issues since then related to that, that we know that that's been taken care of, or how do we know that we're past that?
That issue's been resolved.
Okay. Thank you.
Are we ready to vote? Please pull the council.
Motion carries seven zero.
Item number three, Ms. Davis.
Madam Mayor?
Yes.
I have a potential conflict in this and like to recuse myself.
Understood. Thank you.
Mr. Dahl, do we have to vote to allow him to abstain?
Maybe if there's a challenge, we would have to.
I mean, it's not like anything we're deciding changes his situation.
Because he's a named party out here.
Well, we're, well, it's not like we're changing, right? We're going to get him on the line or something. Well, I think it would also be if someone, if someone asked him to do that, he's volunteered to do it, so I don't see that there would be any reason to do that. I know this is critical, but if it did, if any of the rose or whatever.
Well, I'd love to say it's jumped right at me, but I can't quite find it. What I advise, though, it's always appropriate to take a motion to permit Councilmember Starker to recuse himself.
to recuse himself for this agenda item.
Madam Mayor?
I'd, I'd ask you to do that while I'm trying to see if the rules control it, but I have not found the reference yet.
You're kind of mumbling into your paper there.
Sorry.
Your mic.
Mic's on, right? Can you hear me, everybody?
Yeah.
And may I move to allow Mr. Starker to abstain on item number three?
Abstain or recuse?
Recuse.
Do I have a second on that?
Second.
May I have a vote on that, please?
Can you vote on?
Motion carries seven zero.
So Mr. Starker can recuse himself from the vote? We'll come get you. When we're done. Ms. Davis, you'll go ahead and please read the item.
He's picking up the pizza order. Thank you. Resolution Number 43-2014, a resolution amending the fiscal year 2014 general fund budget to reflect the approval of a supplemental budget appropriation in the amount of $37,000 for the purpose of funding current enhanced sales tax incentive program agreement payments. In the 2014 budget, $103,000 was budgeted for the enhanced sales tax incentive program, S-DEP, payments for five agreements approved by the City Council. Sales tax increment revenues for those agreements have exceeded this amount, and additional funding in the amount of $37,000 is needed to satisfy the city's obligations for the 2014 S-DEP payment. Just to list, the council approved the following S-DEP agreements that are partially payable in the fiscal year 2014. Dillon Companies, which is the King Supers on 38th and Sheridan, Walrus, the West 29th Restaurant, Liquid Artworks Colorado Plus, Taste of Home Cooking, and Muscle Master, which is the Green Herb, which is actually a supplement company, not what you might be thinking.
So, is there a motion in order? Yeah, I don't believe we have any other reports, do we? No. I'm sorry.
She hasn't made a motion.
No, she's going to make a motion.
That's, yeah.
Yes, a motion is in order?
Okay. I move to approve Resolution Number 43-2014, a resolution amending the fiscal year 2014 general budget fund to reflect the approval of a supplemental budget appropriation in the amount of $37,000 for the purpose of funding current S-DEP agreement payments.
May I have a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Langworthy? Is there any discussion?
I'd like to just, just add one discussion. And I think a lot of that, and, and the reason why I list some of the companies and, or actually not some, the companies, is I think this is really great because if you see, again, they're giving a portion of sales tax that we never had before, and they're, they're exceeding our projections as far as growth and sales tax. So I just really think that's a positive for our community, a positive for our businesses. If you all noted, we have finalized the Colorado Cyclory, or the Wheat Ridge Cyclory agreement. I think that was last year, and that was ahead of time. So I think this is just, just a great reflection of, of some of the things going on in our city and that we're exceeding some of these agreements to finish them out sooner.
Thank you. Now let's poll the council unless there's further comments or discussion. Nope? Please do.
Motion, motion carries, carries six zero.
And our police officer's going to get Councilmember Starker?
True.
Move on to item number four, Mr. Urban.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Motion to approve payment to Dillon Companies in the amount of $107,108.23 for the 12-month period ending June 30, 2014, in accordance with an enhanced sales tax incentive program agreement. At issue, the City Council approved an enhanced sales tax incentive program agreement with the Dillon Companies, AKA King Supers, in 2012. The first 12-month period of the agreement ended on June 30, 2014, a total of $107,108.23 in sales tax increment was generated over this period of time and is due to the Dillon Companies in accordance with this agreement.
Madam Mayor?
Yes?
If I could still request, we need a, an amendment to this dollar amount that actually the, we just wrapped up the 2013 audit that you heard of, and, and they did catch a calculation error. The actual number, dollar amount or payment to Dillon Companies should be $104,739.76. Correct.
So the, the, the motion should be amended. Do we have to, can we just write it that way, or do we have to make an official, well, motion hasn't been made yet, so.
Yeah.
So all we need to do is change the number.
Yep.
Mr. Urban, are you comfortable with what you need to do?
Yep. I move to approve payment to Dillon Companies in the amount of $104,739.76 for the 12-month period ending June 30, 2014, in accordance with an enhanced sales tax incentive program agreement.
Second.
And Mr. Tullio has seconded. Do we have some discussion here?
I have a quick question. So Patrick, with the adjustment, does, does that actually adjust, adjust the prior motion or is the $37,000?
It, it does not need to adjust the prior motion. $37,000 is, is a, is an estimate of, of what we think we're going to need.
An estimate anyway, so it, if, if it comes under, then we're good.
Yeah, and the 37 is for all five agreements.
For all five agreements, okay.
We have an accountant on our council. Any other questions or discussion? Please poll the council.
Motion carries seven zero.
Thank you. Let's move on to item number five, Mr. Pond.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Happy to introduce a motion to approve payment to Commercial Fitness Solutions Incorporated in the amount of $42,255 for purchase and trade-in of commercial treadmill equipment per RFP 14-17. The Wheat Ridge Rec Center is seven treadmills in the fitness area, which were purchased in 2007 and in need of replacement. The treadmills are one type of cardiovascular equipment that is available, and they're heavily used. Two vendors submitted bids, Commercial Fitness Solutions was selected based on product specification, pricing, trade-in offer for existing equipment, extended warranty, and the ability of facility maintenance staff to maintain this equipment on a long-term basis. Is a motion in order?
Oh, let's see, does Ms. Manwaring have anything you need to say? Nope. I believe a motion is in order.
There will not be a demonstration. I move to approve payment to Commercial Fitness Solutions Incorporated in the amount of $42,255 for commercial treadmill equipment.
I'll second that.
I have a second from Mr. Starker. Any questions or discussion from the council? Seeing none, please poll the council.
Motion carries seven to zero.
Moving on to our final item, number six, Jen Wooden.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. This is Resolution Number 44-2014, a resolution amending the fiscal year 2014 general fund budget to reflect the approval of a supplemental budget appropriation in the amount of $2,500 for the purpose of sponsoring the 2014 Arvada Community Food Bank's Top Hats and Ball Caps fundraiser. At issue, the city received a sponsorship request from the Arvada Community Food Bank to sponsor the inaugural fundraising event, Top Hats and Ball Caps, Changing the Future of Hunger. Is a motion in order?
I believe a motion is in order.
I move to approve Resolution Number 44-2014, a resolution amending the fiscal year 2014 general fund budget to reflect the approval of a supplemental budget appropriation in the amount of $2,500 for the purpose of sponsoring the 2014 Arvada Community Food Bank's Top Hats and Ball Caps fundraising event.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Tullio. Is there any questions or discussions? Ms. Langworthy?
I just, I guess I would like, I sit on the board of the Wheat Ridge Feed the Future program, and thankfully, the Arvada Food Bank provides food for us. But due to some changes in the way the law is written, because the Arvada Food Bank with the Feed the Future doesn't kind of take actual financials, how much people make and, and such like that, the, they, they've taken a substantial hit to their, their funding. And so, and probably across the board, I know how it impacts directly the Feed the Future because our bags were originally $2 a bag, and now they're going to be $3.50 a bag coming up. So this money, this fundraising event is an integral part, and Arvada Food Bank now completely serves Wheat Ridge. It had only served part of it, I think, of about 40, 38th, and, and now it's all of Wheat Ridge. So it's, it's a really great way to make sure our citizens have food on their table every night.
Thank you for that. Are we ready to poll the council?
Motion carries seven zero.
That concludes our business meeting. City managers matters.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. I'm proud to announce this evening that over the weekend, our police department was, received its re-accreditation from KLEA, which is the Commission on Accreditation for Law Enforcement Agencies. Three years ago, they received their first accreditation. This was the first renewal, which is usually tougher than the first go-around, so I'm very, very happy about this. Mission of KLEA is to ensure, to enhance law enforcement as a profession and to improve law enforcement's service delivery. The KLEA accreditation award process is primary method for an agency to voluntarily demonstrate their commitment to excellence in law enforcement. And I know our chief is very, very happy and proud of his department for, for this success. So thank you.
City attorneys matters.
Nothing other than to confirm that actually the rules of procedure don't govern recusal, but instead the charter does. And it occurred to me to look there, and there are two provisions in the charter, both of which permit the council to, to vote, to permit someone not to vote. And so you follow the right procedure, and we guessed right, so we won't have to guess next time. Thank you.
Elected officials matters. Do you want to start with Mr. Tullio?
I have nothing this evening.
Mr. Starker?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I would just like to, I've been to several of the listening sessions that we've held throughout the city over the last two weeks. I want to thank all the citizens who made themselves available and made, took the effort to, to get to those meetings, to express their opinions, to find out some of the information that we had gathered in the poll, and I would just like to say thank you very much.
Mr. Urban?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'd like to encourage everybody to come out to the Jefferson County Fair on the August 7th through the 10th. Should be a great community event and great time to showcase what all the kids are doing and what all the farms are doing as well. So encourage everybody to come out to that.
Ms. Davis?
I just want to quickly mirror what Mr. Starker had said. I did attend one of the outreach meetings, and it was great to get the feedback from folks and get the information and have a chance to, to meet with the members of our community and, and discuss their needs. Also wanted to thank the principal for Wilmore Davis for attending today, and believe it or not, I was at Wilmore Davis when we chose the name Warriors, Wilmore Davis Warriors. So that's the mascot, so just a little fun tidbit.
She's just always got a, Mr. Pond?
I have nothing better than that.
There's no getting on the topic.
There's nothing I can do. Thanks.
Ms. Langworthy? So I would like to thank those that came out. We had the Feed the Future Summer Gala, and I got numbers, I think, this morning or yes, this morning, that said that we raised, raised over $4,000 at it. It was just a small little event, but it was $4,000 that go to a very worthy cause, helping our students be able to study well and not study hungry. So I, I thank everybody who came out for that, and that's it. Thank you.
Ms. Wooden?
I also want to thank everyone that came out for the community input meetings. I went to two meetings, and there was very diverse opinions, and that's exactly what we need to hear. So thank everyone that spent the time to come out and listen to what the city had to say and then give us your feedback. Also wanted to thank John Martinez coming from Wilmore Davis. We do have 18 schools. They're public, private, faith-based schools, all within our area, with the, either within the city boundaries or within the Wheat Ridge articulation area. And I hope to have all 18 principals in here to tell you about their schools so that council and the public can know a little bit more about what, what kind of education we have in Wheat Ridge. Thank you.
Okay, well, I have a few things. You thought you were going to get out of here early. First of all, Mr. Fitzgerald, one of our city council members, is not present tonight because of a knee operation. He's had a knee replacement. He will be missing one or two more meetings, I believe. Okay? Yep. And he's, he's a great counselor, and he's, he is missed. Thank you all so very much to the whole community for, for attending so many of those, the community meetings. The input was, was just great. I got to attend two open houses this past weekend. One was Mountain Vista at 4,900 Tabor, and that is a rehab center. They just opened a new wing, which would help somebody recovering from hip, from hip or knee surgery. The second one was really quite fun, Swim Otter. Swim Otter is a new company that's come into Wheat Ridge. As a matter of fact, this is the seventh swim otter in Colorado, and we are now their corporate headquarters. Great little company. They do private swim lessons for children between six months and 12 years. The owner, Kathy Noak, is determined that her belief is that children should not be afraid of water and should know how to feel comfortable in it. So she has, she has made that her headquarters. Mr. Starker was there with us, too. So, and that is the largest independently owned swim club in Colorado. So they're right here with all of us. I believe we're ready to adjourn the meeting. May I have a motion, please? With the mayor pro temp, give me that motion. Motion to adjourn?
Second.
Second, and I need a vote on that?
Motion carries seven to zero.
Tracy, can I give you a check for Feed the Future? Yes? Do I just?